Good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the whole meeting for March 16th to order. A lot of things, again, going on, so pray for peace in Europe. We'll have a moment of silence for whatever you want to think about. Thank you. Alderman Dunn, if you'd please lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Brian Crupp, our Deputy City Clerk, if you'd be kind enough to call the roll for this evening.
Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Cornet?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Ortiz?
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor?
Very good, thank you, sir. Good evening again, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the whole meeting. Again, like to welcome everybody in attendance here and anybody on any particular electronic device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you share them with all your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but please remember to remember that we'd like to reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. For anybody in here, especially cell phones, if you'd please silence them or turn them off simply because they'll get in the way of someone talking. If you want to address the council on any particular item, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. Please address us as a body and not an individual. You'll have five minutes to do so. Please tell us where your name, your ward or address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. You'll have an additional comment other than what's on the agenda item at the end during public business. Please keep your remarks to five minutes. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. Thank you. City Administrator Spiegel, is there any update for us this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
All right, we'll get right to it. We have nine public hearings this evening. Four under community development, two under public works, and three under finance. Community development will start. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will lead those public hearings. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearings for community development. Public hearing number one on the proposed conveyance of 14 public housing properties to Ecumenical Housing Development Group. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. Public hearing number two is on the proposed conveyance of three public housing properties to Vera French Housing. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing is closed. Public hearing number three is on the proposed conveyance of four public housing properties to Habitat for Humanity Quad Cities. Is there anyone from the public to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed. Public hearing on the recommended allocations for year 48, community development block grant funds and open investment partnership home funds. Is there anyone from the public to comment? Do you need?
Thank you, Alderman Gripp, Mayor Mattson, and council members. I am Mark Holloway, Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee, referred to as the CAC. The CAC, appointed by the mayor and council members, recommends funds for an overseas to community block grant development, also referred to as CDBG. Each year, the CDBG and home programs help thousands of Davenport residents by making funds available for decent, safe, affordable housing, by improving neighborhood infrastructure, by loaning funds to small businesses, and by funding services to children, families, the homeless, abuse victims, and those with mental illness. Faced with the reality of reduced federal funding, the task of reviewing applications and recommending grant amounts has grown only more difficult. The annual CDBG funding has declined by 25% from its highest funded year, while the home funding has also been reduced by 48% overall. Current requests exceed $1.9 million, but the estimated entitlement is expected to be only $1.7 million. The need continues to grow as the funds continue to diminish. In the federally capped category of public services, nearly 400,000 was placed, though only approximately 290,000 may be allocated to those funds. The application process for CDBG funds begins with a workshop for applicant to provide them with the opportunity to review and ask questions about the application form, the process, the applicable federal regulations. Applicants then complete the application form, assemble the information requested to satisfy HUD requirements, and submit the application by the required date. The CAC reviews and discusses each application in a work session, listing requests for additional clarification and information, if needed, from the applicant. Requests from any additional information are sent to the applicants with the responses to be provided before the next step the applicant then presents to the CAC. The applicant presentations held at a public meeting allows the applicants the opportunity to showcase the work they do as well as answer any additional questions the CAC members might ask. Following the presentation, each committee member evaluates the application based on a criteria review and approved each year by the CAC. The results of the CAC member evaluations are compiled according to the agreed-upon point system, the same system used last year. The points earned are translated into a percentage of available dollars to be awarded and funding recommendations are determined. The CAC met in March, voted on and approved to meet to track the progress of grants and monitor the concerns of applicants that puts the funding to the good use of the community. We of the CAC, recognizing the time, effort, and commitment invested in the process, request that the council accepts the CDBG recommendations for the upcoming year and would like to thank the mayor and council for allowing us the opportunity to serve the community in such a meaningful way. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Holloway, and thank you for volunteering for the CAC. It's an important job for a citizen. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Aye.
All right. That concludes the public hearings in community development this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will lead that discussion. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have two public hearings this evening. Open the first public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Skybridge North Stair Tower repair project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing?
Well, I didn't plan on talking about this, but you get an architect, and you're going to get an architect's opinion. The North Skybridge Tower, I really don't have anything about that, but it struck me a couple of years ago that the South Tower, of course, the South Tower, which is the riverside of the Skybridge, all glass around the elevators. It seems to me that when we do renovate that, or maybe it's already been done, but the next time we renovate it, I think we ought to seriously consider, of course, you've got glass facing east, which is a good thing, but since the whole elevator tower is glass, we'd have a lot more impactful and exciting elevator trip, I think, if we had one or two of the side walls be glazed as well. Wouldn't be that expensive, could be done, I think. There might be a few people that would just be totally freaked out by having glass on three sides, but maybe with two, then at least tower in the front and the one side. But I think, given the fact that it's right by the river, it's our most important, it's our symbol of our city, that's something we ought to think about and I'd just raise that issue tonight. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Handel. Anyone else?
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the FY 2023 state patching program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. This public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Next area of public hearings is under finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will lead. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have three items under finance for public hearing. I open the first public hearing. Public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 operating budget, fiscal year 2023 capital improvement budget, and fiscal year 2023 fiscal year 2028 capital improvement plan. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that will close that public hearing. The second public hearing is a public hearing on granting an overhead electric easement across city-owned property located at 3400 Brady Street, parcel P1316-03 to Mid-American Energy. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that closes public hearing number two. The third public hearing is public hearing on the proposed perpetual non-exclusive easement to reconstruct, operate, maintain, replace, or remove electric supply lines for the transmission and distribution of electric energy and for communication and electrical controls related to grantees' operations, Mid-American Energy Company of the petitioner. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that closes the third public hearing. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. All right, we move on to proclamations. We have one, and I'll read. City Davenport, whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character, and throughout our history, citizens have stepped up to meet our challenges by volunteering in their communities. And whereas AmeriCorps provides opportunities for nearly 75,000 Americans to serve their country through an intensive commitment to serve at nonprofits, schools, public agencies, and community and faith-based groups across the country. And whereas in Iowa, more than 6,200 AmeriCorps members of various ages and backgrounds help to meet local needs at more than 800 locations in the state. And whereas since AmeriCorps was founded in 1994, more than 18,200 AmeriCorps members in Iowa served more than 16 million hours and qualified for the Segal AmeriCorps Education Awards totaling more than $43 million. And whereas the city of Davenport, AmeriCorps Youth Corps Program supports AmeriCorps members at local organizations, these members serve school-aged children by helping to increase attendance, serve in after-school programs, provide youth outreach, programming, and forge mentor-mentee relationships. And whereas AmeriCorps Week is an opportunity to recognize the dedication and commitment of more than 1 million Americans who have chosen to serve their country through AmeriCorps and their community partners, and to encourage more Americans to follow their footsteps in service. Now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim March 13th to March 19th, 2022, as AmeriCorps Week, and urge the community to thank AmeriCorps members and alumni for their service and to find their own ways to give back to their communities. And I move the, or ask for a motion to move the proclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Proclamation is approved, and I have Raleigh Vaughn and Kathy Gronbeck will meet me at the podium. These wonderful leaders do great service to our city and community by overseeing what this AmeriCorps program does for us.
I want to thank Mayor Mattson and the council, as well as the city of Davenport, for supporting our AmeriCorps program throughout the years. We do appreciate your support for our program and hope to continue to have that in the future. AmeriCorps Week is such an important week for us to celebrate, as we want to thank our past and current members for all of their service in our community. Just last year, in 2021 alone, 73 members served a total of 34,000 hours of service. We're looking forward to all that we can do in 2022, and we thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership in running this, too. It's appreciated. All right, next, petition communications. So maybe some of the other people will talk about it, but we have, just before this, we had a great opportunity to talk with our friends from the state and our Director of Economic Development, Debbie Dern from the state, and welcome her to Davenport today and tomorrow, as gathering of the green is going on at the River Center, so encourage everybody to do that. So, let's see. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Third ward meeting will be Monday, March 21st, here in Council Chambers. It starts at 6:30. Chad Dyson will be our guest, and we'll be talking about what's coming up in Parks and Rec for the summertime. We'll be talking about the ARPU funds and how that's being used in our parks, what'll be happening, and just a tiny bit about their very intensive strategic plan, which they just finished, which sort of asks people to look to the future of our parks. So, hope you can join us again. That's Monday night, March 21st, at 6:30 PM, right here in City Chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Condon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Happy St. Patrick's Day to Davenport, and thank you to my fellow Irishmen and the Irish for the day that braved the cold weather this past Saturday and participated in the grand parade. It was a great day, and as I always refer to it, it's the happiest day of the year and the unofficial arrival of spring in Davenport. So, this year, I've also referred to it a lot in referencing my family's motto, which is "Traditions to Keep." And I wanted to recognize and thank the St. Patrick's Day Society, who has been doing the good work of keeping their traditions alive for 36 years. There may be someday another parade that's colder than this past Saturday, but there will never be another parade that is any hotter than the one that they put on last August. And I want to thank them for keeping that tradition alive, and I just wanted to proclaim that spring has arrived in Davenport. I suspect this summer and spring, there's a lot of families that have a lot of traditions to reclaim and traditions to keep. So, Happy St. Patrick's Day and looking forward to a great spring in the community.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Let's see. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I'm happy to announce that I will have my first in-person ward meeting, March 24th, at Washington Elementary. I don't have a speaker as of yet, because I have so many question and answers for my ward that I feel like I need to try to set my footings and answer a lot of questions, but I will be looking for a speaker. I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity. I know I'm slow-moving, but hey, got to get it together, and thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Ortiz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder, March 21st, 6 o'clock, I will also be having a ward meeting at the Keppi Building, located inside the Mississippi Valley Fairgrounds. I ask all my ward residents to please bring their cell phones. We will have staff there to help get you signed up for all the great apps we have, or call it, so that way, if we have any meetings or anything, the city can call ahead and let you know about them. And then we'll also discuss the two-way conversion for Third and Fourth Streets, so hope to see as many people as we can, and the weather is nicest time. Last time I held it, it was the coldest day of the year, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Ortiz. Alderwoman Lee?
I just want to build on Alderman Condon. It is spring. Last Sunday, there were still some eagles down by the dam. We walked this afternoon before the meeting, and I saw my first pelican of the year. So, it is spring. The robins are here, the killdeer are out calling and looking for nesting sites out at the heritage park where the boats will be coming in. So, it's just, it's spring. It's very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Dunn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I know it's spring, but let's not put the trucks away yet, because snow could happen any day.
I'll pause. Okay, yeah, let's hope. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, moving on to the particular areas of discussion. There are four. Community development, public safety, public works, and finance. We'll start with community development, led by Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Four items on community development this evening. Item number one is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of 14 public housing properties to Ecumenical Housing Development Group. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Please step to the lectern and state your name and address or ward, please.
Good evening. I'm Joyce Miller. I'm from the first ward. My question is in regards to all three of the conveyances of the public housing properties. If there was someone from staff here that could kind of explain to us how they came up with the amounts of these, what these groups are going to be buying these properties for?
So, Bruce, if you're prepared to speak to it tonight, otherwise, we're planning on leaving these three items on the discussion agenda for next week. So, it's up to you. If you're prepared, by all means, come up now if you want to wait till next week.
Bruce Berger, community and economic development. The process that the city went through, and it's been several years for some of the newer council members, when we first started, was a realization that there still is a need for affordable housing. So even though rental managing and owning rental housing isn't the city's core mission, we did want to retain those affordable housing units. So, that's what set us on the initial course of soliciting offers from the nonprofit affordable housing sector. And through an RFI process, a little over, I'm trying to think through our timing now, I guess it's a year and a half ago or so, is how we landed on the three nonprofits that are on your agenda today, and their offers came in here in the last couple of months, finalizing their pro forma, looking at what their costs would be and what their rehab would be. So, there really wasn't much kind of an answer of the question. There really wasn't a process on the city's part to establish the amount. Rather, we wanted to make sure that they were going to remain affordable and viable for the coming future. And it coincides with HUD. I'll just mention this, it's not right on the agenda, but I think throughout the green sheets, you'll see that the HUD has still not approved it yet. So, the offers that nonprofits have submitted are still winding their way through, but we're in front of you, because some of the nonprofits are looking at applying for some funding, and so to be able to say that they're conditionally approved, if you do approve that, was beneficial for their fundraising efforts, so. I don't know if that totally answers your question, but I can talk with you later.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Is there anyone from the council? Okay. Seeing no one, this item will move on. We'll go to item number two. A resolution authorizing the conveyance of three public housing properties to Vera French Housing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Anyone from the council? Item number three is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of four public housing properties to Habitat for Humanity Quad Cities. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the council? Okay. We're going to keep all three of these on discussion, since it's a resolution. It's a two-week cycle, so we want to make sure we give everyone an opportunity to comment. I'll just provide some brief comments as we've gone through this process of the city getting out of the public housing business and selling the heritage, and then finding out that there wasn't quite as much demand for these properties, which we're calling the scattered sites. The demand wasn't there, the market interest as much as it was for the Heritage Building. But through the process, the council kind of said, here's a few things that are very important as you go to sell these scattered sites. The first is, they have to stay as affordable housing. They need to, we need to maintain our stock of affordable housing, and these need to stay that way. And also, it needs to be decent affordable housing. And really, I think the way that you get decent affordable housing is you have good, strong nonprofit organizations, like are listed right here, to be partners and continue to make sure that they are decent housing. And then, this is something that was very important to Alderwoman Lee, and she worked very hard on it, was to ensure that the people who lived in these homes got to stay in these homes, if at all possible. And from what the best I can tell, at least 38 of the 42 will be able to stay, and there's also an opportunity to be able to own the property in a few, in four of the other cases. So, I think that this offer meets that criteria, and then it'll be up to the council if the rest of the criteria isn't met to sell. So, more conversation on that next week, if there is any. So, item number four, the last item in community development, is a motion approving the allocations for year 48 CDBG funds and home investment partnership funds. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this? Anyone from the council? Okay. I will just further reiterate my thankfulness to Mr. Holloway for chairing that committee, but to all the folks who are on that committee. If you hear, it's been a similar message as long as I've been on council, that fund continues to shrink, and the demand from the nonprofits is still there, and so they have a very difficult job of dividing that money and giving it to the nonprofits. And so it's one of those committees that it's really important, so I appreciate their effort. If there's no other comments, I will ask Alderwoman Lee to please set our agenda.
Thank you very much. I move that items one, two, and three be placed on the discussion agenda, and item four placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that concludes community development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. The next area is public safety. Alderman Jobchin and Alderwoman Dickman will lead. Alderman Jobchin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three items under the public safety agenda this evening. The first is a resolution approving street, lane, or public ground closures on the listed dates and times to hold outdoor events. I will read both components before asking for comment. First is Project Renewal. Fit Fest, 906 West Fifth Street, Saturday, April 23rd, 2022, 7:00 a.m., 12:00 p.m. closures, West Sixth Street from Marquette Street to Gaines Street, Warren Street from West Fifth Street to West Sixth Street. And the other is Cornbelt Running Club, BICS at 6 Training Run, Thursday, June 23rd, 2022, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Thursday, June 30th, 2022, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Thursday, July 7th, 2022, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And Thursday, July 14th, 2022, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. closures, East Fourth Street from Pershing Avenue to River Drive, Pershing Avenue from East Fourth Street to Kirkwood Boulevard, Kirkwood Boulevard from Pershing Avenue to Jersey Ridge Road, Jersey Ridge Road from Kirkwood Boulevard to Middle Road, McCollum Boulevard from Middle Road to River Drive. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items?
I don't know if you can see, Mr. Jobchin. I'll just say, I don't see anyone.
And then, anyone from council?
That's a negative also.
All right, thank you for the assist, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to item number two. Motion approving noise variance requests for various outdoor events on the listed dates and times. Again, we'll read all components before asking for comment. J&amp;M Displays Incorporated, fireworks after Quad City River Bandits Games, Monterey Woodman Park, 209 South Gaines Street, various dates, April through September 2022, fireworks over 50 dB. Next, St. Ambrose University, St. Ambrose Band Day, Peterson Pavilion, McClair Park, Saturday, May 14th, 2022, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. outdoor band music over 50 dB. And last, City of Davenport, Party in the Park, 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. multiple dates and locations, June through August 22 with attached map, outdoor music over 50 dB. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items?
I see no one.
And then, anyone from council?
I see no one.
Thanks again, Mr. Mayor. And then the last is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I'll read the new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location transfer. And then below are the annual license renewals for everyone's review. The one item is Yoshi's Bar and Filipino Canteen, eight thirty-one West Third Street, new license, outdoor area, license type, Class C liquor. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item, or these items, excuse me?
Seeing no one.
And then anyone from council?
Seeing no one.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. And then I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I make a motion that all items be placed on the consent agenda. There's a motion.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor? All host? Back to you. Thanks for all the assists.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson and Alderwoman Dickman. The next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have twenty items this evening for public works. Item number one is a second consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter fifteen point one, two point zero four, four of the municipal code of the Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a second consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter fifteen point one, six point zero one, five, entitled the National Electrical Code of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a second consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter fifteen point one, six point zero three, zero, entitled Chapter One Modified of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Skybridge North Stair Tower Repair Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the FY twenty-twenty-three State Patching Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding a blanket contract for the purchase of hot mix asphalt to Riverstone Group Incorporated of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents and fifty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents per ton, and to back up contractor Tickle Asphalt Company of Mylan, Illinois in the amount of sixty-seven dollars, I'm assuming, per ton. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of asphalt oils for the twenty-twenty-two construction season to business materials and supply of Des Moines, Iowa in the amount of two, two dollars and forty-seven cents per gallon. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution awarding a contract for the Silver Creek Stabilization Project to Rittmer Incorporated of DeWitt, Iowa in the amount of three hundred and five thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and one cent. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution awarding a contract for the Edgewood Drive Reconstruction Project to NJ Miller, Bettendorf, Iowa in the amount of four hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty cents. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number ten is a resolution awarding a contract for the Pershing Avenue Resurfacing Project to Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eleven is a resolution awarding a contract for the CY twenty-twenty-two Contract Milling Program to Minats of Eastern Iowa of Comanche, Iowa in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number twelve is a resolution awarding a contract for engineering services for the flood mitigation River Drive from Cary to Third Street Project, HR Green of Cedar Rapids, Iowa in the amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on, but I will ask that this is left on discussion. Item number thirteen is a resolution authorizing the submission of a RISE grant application to the United States Department of Transportation for grant assistance with enhancing, improving transportation access through flood mitigation efforts and infrastructure improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on, and I will ask if this one's left on discussion, please. Item number fourteen is a res, I'll read items fourteen through eighteen and then ask for comment. Item number fourteen is a resolution assessing the cost of boarding up buildings at various lots, tracks, real estate. Item number fifteen is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number sixteen is a resolution, the cost of sidewalk replacement at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number seventeen is a resolution assessing the cost of tree removal at various lots and tracks of real estate. Item number eighteen is a resolution assessing the cost of weed cutting at various lots, tracks, and real estate. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address any of them items?
Yes, I'm Joe Charlton. I live in the fourth ward. This has been going on so many times. The houses hadn't been boarded up, weeds hadn't been cut, brushes, sidewalks hadn't been replaced. There are times somebody complained to something, real estate, trying to get, the city's trying to get ahold of them, no answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counsel. Seeing none, this item, these items will move on. Item nineteen is a motion awarding mowing contracts to the lowest responsible, responsible bidder in each category. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number twenty is a motion approving a professional service contract for federal grant consultant work with Keller Partners and Company of Washington and DC in the amount of eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel. Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to make a motion to put twelve and thirteen on discussion, and the rest of them on consent agenda, please.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Any opposed, same sign. And the agenda is set, and that concludes public works. And back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. The next area is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Cornet will lead the discussion. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have seven items on finance this evening. Item number one is a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three operating budget, fiscal year twenty-twenty-three capital improvement budget, and the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-twenty-eight capital improvement plan. Before I open this up to the public, I'm going to pause and welcome our city Administrator Spiegel to present to us a summary of this item.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. And Brian's going to be my co-pilot for this. Before we get into the slides, a special thank you to the entire finance department and the department and team who put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this process. And specific kudos to Jolly, who has taken us first budget from start to finish, which is a really big deal. And a special thanks to our union partnership. Our city is a service provider, and our staff is a big piece of that. So the teamwork we have with our unions is really, a really important part of this process as well. So with that, we will get rolling. As, as we've done for many years now, the fundamentals of this budget are based on the goals, which you all set earlier this year, as well as our six operational pillars. So everything that we are doing ties back to these fundamental ideologies that we use. This particular budget for fiscal year twenty-three complies with your council policies, and, and we know how important that is. We hear from the rating agencies every year how important those policies are, and that we continue to adhere to them. I know it's all important to you, and it's important to staff, that it maintains our tax levy. So we maintain the sixteen seventy-eight, which we've done for many years now. And as was indicated in the first slide, it is a mission-aligned budget. So we are here to focus on the core businesses of the city, ensuring that we provide great services, continue to invest in our community, and successfully deliver both the ARPA program and then our work plan. So the budget that is before you represents a modest increase. So the operating budget moves up a little bit. Capital moves down. As a reminder, that takes into account the federal grant program. So that number kind of ebbs and flows depending on some of those bigger projects we have. And then debt moves up a little bit. So overall, just under one percent increase from twenty-two to twenty-three. Fee adjustments, as we've talked, we try to do a little at a time, so that our residents can plan for it and that we can make good systemic improvements. So the residential sewer fee will be increased five percent. As a reminder, that is less than the seven percent we had previously done. Solid waste and clean water are both an increase of three percent, and hazmat will be an increase of five percent. Again, this is a really important service we actually provide, and service that we cover a good chunk of eastern Iowa on. General fund assigned reserves, I, I don't think any of us would have imagined this slide would have looked like this a couple years ago. But as we've been working with you, thirty-nine point seven percent is where we, we landed last year. We have a plan that we are working with you to spend that down to get back to the twenty-five percent, which is your policy. And we're going to continue delivering those projects that we've discussed. The, kind of the budget composition. So you see this slide, this pie chart, every year, and it doesn't change a lot, which is actually a good thing. But when you think of the general fund revenues, you want kind of your taxes and your salaries and benefits to stay aligned, which they continue to. But this shows you that, again, we are a service organization. But we are very balanced in how we're managing those resources and expenditures. And then when you add in trust and agency, that's where you see those pie charts align even closer. So the CIP highlights, this is where we spend a lot of our time in January, but continued investment into our infrastructure, specifically streets and sewers. So more than twenty-one million dollars in fiscal twenty-three is planned. We're moving forward with Station Three and the build-out of the new one. So there's ten million in public safety investments for that. We are continuing to be very conscientious about replacing our fire apparatus on a kind of continuous basis. So we never, never get behind. Those are very expensive pieces of equipment, and you never want to fall behind on that. And the same with PD, being able to allocate a pretty significant amount to restore their fleet, I would say, at this point. And with public safety comes the fun things, too. So significant investments in the park system, more than a million dollars. And you can see, that's a, that's a large increase. And that is not the ARPA projects. This is just your CIP stuff. So really great things coming ahead for our park systems, and I think will be great amenities for our neighborhoods in the future. So CIP, we talk about diversifying it. Obviously, those big chunks, our streets and sewers, that's our bread and butter. We know that as a nearly two-hundred-year-old city, we have a lot of room to go there. But you can see that we are investing across our portfolio of assets to make sure that we continue to, to maintain a safe and stable city. CIP, we show you this one, I think we're many years into this one, that the top line is really all about our federal projects. So when you think about the very bottom line, you actually see a, a lot of fluctuation year to year. The middle section is the part that matters. That's the reinvestment into what I would consider our neighborhood infrastructure, which is one of the priorities you selected again as a council goal. So that's the one we benchmark. We have the most control over that one. And then as we continue to seek federal grants, hopefully the top line gets bigger again, and that will lead to more investment overall. So quick work plan highlights. Council goals were infrastructure and public safety again. So my team is working on lots of things around the police department, recruitment, retention, and talent development. Succession planning's a big piece of that, trying to get more officers and make sure we are continuing to invest in the ones we have. I already mentioned Station Three, but breaking ground on that this year will be very exciting. And then two of the big things that I think your staff team is very proud of, and I think the community is, is receptive of, the youth assessment program is, is well into its first year and seeing some great successes. And the GVI team, you're headed to New York next week, but we're seeing some really great interest in our community partners, which is actually the most important part of that. Sustainable infrastructure, our regional infrastructure. For those of you that live on the north side, East Fifty-third will be coming soon. And we will begin the process, and are well underway on Third and Fourth Street as well. Neighborhood infrastructure, that's the, the map Clay shares, and it looks like that's all over, which is good. That means all the neighborhoods are seeing some level of investment. And then flood mitigation. We have a flood study. Now what are we going to do about it? So starting to move those first projects forward. Neighborhoods, this one I know is very important to everyone, but as we move into year three and ultimately start planning for year four of Dream, the rollout of Dream Plus and the neighborhood stabilization work, to continue to see great investment, especially in our inner core neighborhoods. Regional neighborhood parks, we talked a little bit about that with CIP, and it will be really augmented with some of the ARPA projects. Kudos to Courtney and Adam and the Parks Team for going into the schools and getting the feedback of kindergartners through sixth, sixth graders and what they want to see in their neighborhoods. Apparently, they were very willing to share their opinions. But I think that was a really good community engagement and partnership opportunity with our, our school district that we're proud of. And then Fairmont Community Center, I know the team's working on that. And, and as we have talked through, Heatherton, and some of the things that have happened out there, some really great involvement by the community out there, and that'll be a great asset next to our library. And then, kind of the big ones, and this is the list that will probably have more things added, because we've learned that we don't have control over a lot of things sometimes. But our team is continuing to look at federal and state grant opportunities. We get communication from the Senator's Office almost weekly right now on different things that are happening. The Canadian Pacific Kansas City Southern merger, we have started the negotiation process there, and we'll continue to work in good faith on that process. And then what's important, that you never get to experience it or see the issues, our continuity of operations and cybersecurity. We have lots of things on the business side of the city that we need to ensure that we are continuing to invest in and ensure that we are on the leading edge of protecting our asset, which is our organization. And then there's probably a big dot, dot, dot at the bottom, because there will be more. We know there will, but we will take it in stride as we always do. So I will close with, again, this budget complies with your policies. It maintains the tax levy at sixteen seventy-eight and continues to align with our fundamental goals of this government.
Thank you, Administrator Spiegel. And now, is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item on our agenda? Seeing no one, I'll open it up to council. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. So I just wanted to, to say, I think this was a very good budget process again this year. And I always like to point out, when we're talking about over seventy-five percent of this budget, probably more, we're talking about public infrastructure, public safety, strong neighborhoods. And then, this year, we added in flood mitigation. But when you talk about those three, public safety, public infrastructure, and strong neighborhoods, that is where the vast majority of our budget is going, and that's where it should go. I know a lot of times when we talk about projects, the ones that get a lot of attention are, you're spending X on this park over here, or you're putting what into the river center, or you're doing this on the riverfront. When you look at it in terms of our budget, the vast majority of our money is going to the basic needs of the city, and that's the way it should be. But then there is a small percentage of quality of life, right? You, you need to have nice things in the city to make sure that you're competitive and remain healthy. And I think our budget is very strong and reflects that. Thank you.
Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Could you, Corey, for folks who might be listening, so, you know, this budget doesn't get adopted till, doesn't start till July first. Could you explain why we are approving it now?
I'm going to wing it, and then Mallory will kick me if I do it wrong.
Or Mallory.
So we have to have it certified by the state and into the county by the end of March, right? So that, that's the shot clock we work against. Then the state added some new requirements for transparency, which is why we feel like we're working with you in December, which is a full six months before we're talking about these dollars. But it's an important public and community engagement process. But the state says you have to have it certified by this date. We have to have it turned over to the county so we can levy the taxes, which is an important part of how we do business. And then, you know, as, as you're familiar, we go through an amendment process later on to kind of chew up certain things.
Thank you.
I'll offer my quick sentiment, and then I'll let the mayor have last word. I echo my thanks to the finance department and all of staff, and recognize the position that you've put us in. At a time like this, it's not a, you know, and for a city like ours, it's not something that we can take for granted. And we can afford to have these conversations that don't compromise the safety and the resilience of our city. And we can afford to have the conversations that also make our city a compelling place to live. And similar to Alderman Grip, I want to recognize that, that last part, being compelling, is sometimes the easiest one to feel like you need to duck from when you're sitting up here. But, if I may, the analogy I sometimes use is it's not really hard to find somebody to invest in the real estate to, say, build a music venue, and it's not really hard to find the people to build it. It's It's, it's sometimes when we do those nuts and bolts things, and then we look around at the last minute and realize, can anybody play the guitar? So in that analogy, I'm talking about talent, but in this instance, I'm talking about the intangibles or the culture. Sometimes we need to stop and think and say, you know, when our kids are grown and they're going to look around, does anybody want to live here? And those things matter. So those things take a long time, and in this community, sometimes they're the ones that we duck away from at the last minute when it comes time to take a vote. And, and for me, I, I try to keep in mind that we need to keep that through-line narrative of, of the fact that there's been generations before us that have been working towards these same things, and at some point, our city deserves to arrive. So with that, I will recognize Mayor Mattson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak. So I too want to thank, I want to thank the council for a professional discussion, looking at all the aspects, coming up with the goals, providing comment to our city administrator, who puts together with her staff the work plan that executes. You hear me talk, we set the policies, we, we position the ship in the right direction, and they got to navigate those rough waters ahead. So thank you to Ms. Spiegel, Ms. Mallory, and the Finance, but all of our, our staff that inputs to this budget and takes seriously what we do and what we approve going forward with the citizens' funds and money. No tax levy increase, but still doing what the people ask us to do through the citizen surveys, as my colleagues have already said, focusing on our main efforts of public safety, infrastructure, and parks and neighborhoods, things that matter. A good fund balance that we'll, we'll work on, trying to find other places for some of those funds. But we continue to, I want to emphasize also, we continue to get very positive comments from our rating agencies, and that's been talked about before, and we continue to get good, positive findings from our audits. We have outside eyes look at our budget process and how it happens. And in this last one, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we had no significant findings. Maybe the first time ever. We sometimes have little stuff, and anytime anybody does their checkbook at their home, at least I and my wife, we're always critiquing each other, much less big businesses. So this organization of a hundred and one thousand-plus people managing your funding, no findings by the audit agency, and then our credit agencies continue to say positive direction and positive comments about our budget. So I think we should be proud of this budget. I think the citizens are generally, generally getting what they ask. And again, I want to thank the staff for the work, the council for the discussion, and the emphasis on what they think is important, and then continuing to execute that in a work plan. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your comments. Item number two is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents to grant an overhead electric easement across city-owned property located at thirty-four-hundred Brady Street, parcel P one three one six dash zero three to Mid-American Energy. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? That'll move on. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement for the perpetual non-exclusive easement to construct, reconstruct, operate, maintain, replace, or remove electric supply lines for the transmission and distribution of electric energy and for communication and electrical controls related to guarantees operations. Mid-American Energy Company petitioner. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Item number three will move on. Item number four is a resolution adopting an updated investment policy. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? That'll move on. Item number five is a resolution approving seven open Prairie Forest cover property tax exemptions. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Item number six is a motion awarding a contract for outdoor wireless internet service installation and support at Cork Hill Park, Emys Park Pavilion, Februry Pavilion, Harrington Park, and Centennial Park Pavilion to Metro FiberNet of Evansville, Indiana, in the amount of eighty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? From counsel, I recognize Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Alderman. So this is ARPA. This is the ARPA project for the wireless in the parks. So my, my comment is, how are we going to track usage and effectiveness of this? You don't have to, you can come up an answer if you've got an answer. But the ARPA thing is kind of interesting, because you give all these municipalities across the country millions of dollars and say, go do what cities are going to do. I think it's a grand experiment by the government, and you've, you've got something here which we haven't done before, and I'm just interested, how are we going to see the impact that it has with the dollars that we're spending? Corey Smith, Information Technology. So the, in the proposal, we asked for them to provide a specific type of wireless access point, and it allows us to see its usage. So we'll be able to log usage for it, how often it's usage, or how often it's used, and the amount of bandwidth. So we'll know right away whether or not it's being utilized. Well, I look forward to, to see how it's being utilized. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, sorry, yeah, I'm still on. Seeing no one else, item number six will move on. Item number seven is a motion approving the purchase of a compact loader from Martin Equipment of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of seventy-three thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-two cents, using Sourceball contract number zero three two one one nine dash JDC. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Below on our agenda, we have purchases from ten thousand to fifty thousand. We don't read each of those out loud, but they are listed there for your information. And I'll ask Alderman Cornet, would you please set our agenda?
Our motion that item one be placed on discussion and items two through seven be placed on the consent agenda.
There's a motion. I got it. Is there? So we got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that will conclude Finance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Cornet and Alderman Condon. Next area is, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for this evening. Next item, is there any public or business? If there is any public, please come to the podium. Please give your name, address, or ward. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you have. You have five minutes, and these are only for discussions of things that were not on the agenda. Thank you.
Bill Handel, Ward Four, Davenport, also Nashville, Tennessee. Yesterday, I had the pleasure of attending the announcement that one of your former colleagues made. I'm not going to talk about politics today, but at, at the close of that meeting, because I found out that he was, is a board member of the Scott County Y. Discuss what I talked to this, this body in the past about the nineteen sixty-three Y and Washington Square and what it might mean, what it means, and what it might mean in the future to the city of Davenport. I'll, I'll just read the, the letter that I, I sent him just a few minutes ago. And so what I said, as we discussed at the meeting, I, I read in a recent article in the Quotacy Times, the nineteen sixty-three Y is scheduled to be demolished this spring. And I see, actually yesterday, I saw that work has actually begun, I think probably to take asbestos down. I also read that the Y hopes to market that land, possibly for a future apartment development complex, as was depicted in the downtown Davenport Partnership's latest downtown plan that they produced, and I believe the council, one way or another, accepted last year. I said I have concerns on a number of levels. The nineteen sixty-three Y, number one is perhaps the finest example of mid-century architecture in our downtown. I guess the only thing that's close to it is our central library. Number two, it's arguably the best work of the Davenport firm of Stuart Robeson Laffin, one of my high school classmates, Anne Stewart, her dad ran that firm. And number three, it has great significance to generations of Davenport citizens because of what it's meant to them, what, where they, where they learned how to swim, where they met their friends, where they met people of all walks in life. And I said, per, it's my understanding that those three items, its significance to architecture in general, the firm, and its significance to the citizens are those three things that are taken into consideration when the city ever lists a building as historic. But I also said, also, though, per the preservation ordinance, the city cannot force a reluctant owner to accept such a listing. I said, as you probably know, the nineteen sixty-three Y was built on land, purchased from the city. Land that formerly was Washington Square, one of the three public squares that Antoine Leclerc donated to the city of Davenport. Formerly was the site of the public market, later it was more of a formal park and the gathering place for the city's German-American citizens. In a wake of anti-German hysteria during World War I, the park was wrecked by a mob. Prohibition also did, did the rest of it, and the park never recovered. So what if that site were to become a park again? In contrast to nineteen sixties, when downtowns were considered rather disreputable, nowadays urban parks are in high demand, and their influence can extend for many blocks beyond their borders. Vanderweer is, I guess I'd say, urban. One only need look at Vanderweer Park. If a house is within eight blocks or so of Vanderweer, you can bet that a real estate listing for it will mention it. So I see that the city and the Y are now at a place where a number of opportunities may present themselves for the betterment of both. Given the pace of the demolition work, I would like a chance to present my ideas to the wise Board of Directors as soon as possible. My idea is to reconstitute some or all of Washington Square as a public space and to report purpose at least a significant fragment of that nineteen sixty-three Y. At this point, I contemplate saving at least the indoor pool pavilion. So that's what I sent to him, and a few of you, I, I sent copies of an email that I'd sent about a year and a half ago with photos showing how the Y building, both its gym and its pool pavilion, directly are, I guess reminiscent or, or direct quotations of our Centennial Bridge. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Dale Gilmore, and I live in the Sixth Ward. Tonight's the night many of you have been waiting for. My topic for tonight is why I love the downtown. A few weeks ago, I was standing in the line at the post office, imagine that, and a very nice lady in front of me and I were making small talk, you know, the weather, price of groceries, and so on. When she looked at my button and then asked me, why do you hate the downtown? I asked her why she asked me that, and she said, if you're against the two ways, then you're against the downtown. I assured her that nothing could be further from the truth. I told her, and I will be paraphrasing my reply to her to the best of my memory. I told her that I was born and raised in Davenport, and will most likely die in Davenport. I was probably in high school when she was born. I remember the old downtown, SS Kresge's, Woolworth's, Hanson's Hardware, J.C. Penney, Peterson's Parkers, and the Archaeorphium, just to name a few. My doctor and dentist were both downtown. At Christmas time, our whole family would go downtown to see the animated displays in the store windows. Some people would refer to those times as the good old days. Then came the advent of the big box stores, you know, Turnstile, Spartans, Arlins, Morway, Ardans, open to the north. And then came the Village Shopping Center and Duck Creek Plaza open, and eventually North Park Mall. Many thought these big box stores in North Park would kill the downtown, but it didn't. The downtown changed and survived. Then the Elmore expansion, did that kill the downtown? No, it didn't. It did push Turnstile, Spartans, Arlins, Morway, and Ardans out of business. And the Elmore expansion has put North Park on life support, but not the downtown. The downtown was again forced to change, and it did. You see, the downtown is no longer, the downtown no longer tries, and it should never again try to compete with businesses on Elmore and Fifty-third. That's not the downtown. If you want a steak on Fifty-third Street, you can go to Texas Roadhouse, wait about an hour, be seated with hundreds of people you don't know, be waited on by staff who really don't care, and you'll be eating almost elbow-to-elbow with the other patrons. Or you can go to Tappas on Rockingham, enjoy a better steak for probably less money, waited on by someone who truly cares and appreciates your business, and still be able to hold a conversation with the people at your table. That choice is yours. If you want a burger on the north end, you can go to the filling station. Again, you'll be dining with a couple hundred people you don't know, eating a run-of-the-mill burger, served by a different staff member than was there last week. Or you can go to Boozy's downtown and enjoy a great Boozy Burger, served by someone who has been there for years. Again, the choice is yours. I could give you a dozen other examples, but I only have five minutes. When Amazon opens and offers free same-delivery, and they see free same-day delivery, and they will, will that hurt the downtown? No, it won't. Will that put the squeeze on Walmart, Target, and other big box stores? That's for sure. The downtown was built on, but is no longer dependent on the high-volume retail business. The downtown has changed. Some would say it has evolved, and that's probably a better term. First-floor commercial vacancies in our downtown are lower than the downtown area in our surrounding communities, and a lot lower than North Park. It's hard to explain, but to me, the downtown still has that feeling. Some may call it nostalgia. Maybe it's my reminiscing of the good old days. I don't know. But I do know, to me, it's the heart of Davenport and always will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else. Any other reports, city administrator? Very good. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is a motion second to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We adjourned. Be safe. Have a good weekend. Enjoy the green.